I have that I have to first admit straight off my I had internet for no for five days. I did not have internet last week, which is you really like I can't. I live in the northwest corner of like I live in Great Falls and I had no internet for five days, which made me feel I can't even tell you I I'm trying to do everything from this awful little old iPhone seven. So then, as soon as iPhone seven, as soon as I got the the guy came and fixed it. I I I had to go get a new phone because that phone you realize I am functioning. I can't even function on this phone. Oh, so that means I can't access on my computer, my library account because I changed my phone. So we don't have the authentication. But that is the situation I find myself in at my first meeting as the chair of the library fines committee. So I am just like.
Yeah, don't, don't worry about it. This since this is your first meeting and it's really an introduction for everybody on the committee to the the topic. We as staff have a presentation prepared that will go through and mostly it's just.
That's what it is. If you send me something, I can't see it.
No worries, we will resend it and it will be fine. And because this is your first meeting, I'll introduce you to the other staff on here. So Robert Harvey, wave your hand. That's Robert. Robert is our system administrator, system manager, system guru.
You got it.
So.
Name, Robert? I'm sorry.
Harvey, H A R V Y.
Yeah, Robert, do you want to tell them a little bit about what you what you do here at F C P L?
Sure, so we have a couple of major systems that are available to the public and the staff. And so the I L S or the integrated library system, which basically is all of our borrowing and checkout and cataloging and all that. I just kind of oversee that in the big picture. And then for our self-service options for the customers, such as printing, time management on our public PCs, the wireless infrastructure, all that will kind of help oversee that. And then so what I also tell everybody on the staff is anything that plugs in generally, I'm going to be involved in trying to fix it.
Even if you don't know it has a plug, it's. We also have Robert to thank very gratefully for all of the upgraded exterior wifi that we have. That was a product of Ms. Margaret Kostic and Robert working with our colleagues in D I T. And Robert has also been in the system for many moons now and has worked as our system circulation manager. He's been a branch circulation manager, right?
Page manager, Richard Bird is where I started and then yeah.
So you are an employee of F C P L?
I am, yes.
And Chris Bartholomew is also on the session. Chris has got his hand raised there and Chris is our system circulation manager. Chris, do you want to tell the folks a little bit about yourself and what you do here?
Um, I kind of coordinate circulation situations. I work with the managers, circulation managers to make sure things are running smoothly in their branches for circulation. I get to do actually a good portion of the collections involved, phone calls, emails regarding account accounts that are going through unique collections for us.
And you have also worked in our branches as well?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so system collections, like when people used to say when they were sent to collections, like when their bills had become so large. We don't actually send people to collections. We just very strongly and repeatedly encourage them to bring their stuff back. But Chris, with his wonderful and calm demeanor, is often the last library interface that folks have with us before they get transitioned to a third party. So he's he is a critical part of all of our fines process.
So when you say systems collections, you're not talking about library collections. You're talking about collection.
Money.
Ah, I'm thinking about the collection, like the book collection, that's.
We use an agency called Unique Collections Management, but technically they are collections in name alone. It's only we don't actually collect, but the name of the company is Unique Management Collections.
Do you see like I am over here thinking that this whole time you were talking, Chris? I thought you were talking about the collection, like books, like the collection.
When people call to ask about their collections letters, they get transferred over to tech ops constantly.
Yeah, it is. It is definitely a nomenclature issue, but Chris, Chris helped all of our branch circulation staff as they're working through tough issues. He handles many of our more challenging cases around folks that are having problems paying their fines or finding their items. And Chris and Robert, I invited to this first meeting and the three of us will jointly go through our presentation because they have so much experience and handle all of this stuff regularly. They will, they'll have all the goodies stuff for you. So I'm going to share my screen.
Got a question.
Oh, sure. Jessica, Chris's last name is longer than Barth, right?
Bartholomew.
Bartholomew.
Could you spell that, please?
Sure, B A R T H O L O M is in Michael, E is in elephant, W is in walrus.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So should should we introduce ourselves to each other in addition to Chris and Robert? In case they don't know who everybody is.
That's a good idea.
Totally your choice.
I'm Sujatha Hampton.
Well, okay, then I guess like who you are, like what do you?
I'm Sujatha and I am the Drainsville trustee and the chair of this lovely committee, which I'm just laughing at because it's so funny for me to be the chair of anything on the library committee. But hey, here I am.
You've got it. And mainly I wanted to be able to say, I'm Fran Milhouser and I worked with Chris at Chantilly. When I was branch manager there.
Open Chantilly.
We opened Chantilly, yes, which had been furnished in a low bid contract. And I still remember when we were opening up and one of the one of the circ terminals like caught on fire at the circ desk. There was there was so much stuff that was so fun and that's right, that's right. And I represent, but now I'm a trustee. I represent Mason District, but this year I'm serving as chair. And as my oldest brother said, when I told him last year when I'd been elected chair, he said, well, is it congratulations? Or is it just your turn in the box? And my first meeting, if you recall, it turned out to be my turn in the on the hot seat. So anyway.
And hence me, and here I am because. Oh, it all comes together. Now you have the full story.
And I also worked with Robert because I, you know, on stuff too. Yeah, when I was at admin, so it's good to see you guys. Yay, okay, my turn, I'll stop talking now, sorry.
So I go next. It's nice to see Chris and Robert's smiling faces again. And the rest of my colleagues on the board, I'm Suzanne Levy and I represent the city of Fairfax.
Go ahead. I'm Liz Walker and I represent Sully District and I'm the third newest member on the board. And I served since last March, all through the Zoom sessions. So, but I'm slowly, and it is slow, I'm slowly learning the business of the library. And I'm very glad to be on this committee or subcommittee.
And I'm Jane Miscavige. I'm the at-large trustee on the board and this year I'm serving as vice chair. And I'm I've really been eager to get rid of fines for a while. So thank you for joining us, Chris and Robert. And I think we can make some good changes.
You, I should also note that Erin Julius, the library's marketing and communication director is on as well. Hi Erin, she is also very interested in this, so asked to to sit in and just hear how it goes. So I will share my screen.
Can I say something in advance that Jessica, a lot of material that you sent us to read to do background research.
I I would say you're welcome, but I know that it was a lot. So we're going to go through part of that today as well.
It was interesting. I didn't read all of it, but I did dabble and very interesting.
Absolutely. Can everyone see the screen with the PowerPoint on it? I am not going to try and make it full screen. I apologize. The last time I tried to do that, it just showed everyone the part that has the notes on it that I'm reading. So you don't get to see behind the curtain, you just get to see the partial screen here. And like I said, Robert, Chris and I are just going to bop back and forth and I may ask them to to jump in as we as we go along. So this is your first meeting of the fines review committee. And the directive of the committee right now, which you all are welcome to add to, amend, totally rehash, whatever you want to do, is to review trends in library fines, to take a look at fines and discuss as a group whether or not fines are a barrier to usage or an impetus to returning things, or if there's value in fines still, and if we should look at keeping them in entirety or only getting rid of part of them. There are a lot of different arguments on the both pro and the con side of fines, depending on who you talk to. And if you do decide that eliminating fines is a good idea, you're going to want to talk about where to eliminate them. Do you want to try and do everything, a portion of them? And if so, developing that advocacy point around how is this going to tie in with the county's priorities? How is it going to support our users? Would it bring in more users? Does it align with other county initiatives? There's a lot of tie-ins, particularly with the county's upcoming strategic plan. And then if you do decide to move forward on that, we would need to work collaboratively between the board and staff on budget recommendation, because as we know, the library board can make you approve a budget to go to the county, but the county is ultimately the one that makes a budget and they can amend it as they choose to do. And that does include any revenue that the library takes in. So that's kind of a general overview of where we're at right now. The wonderful Robert sent me this information a week or so ago. And it gives you a really quick snapshot of the fees that people paid in the last fiscal year. And of course, last fiscal year was very funky. So this was July, July 1st of 2019. Wait, Robert, let me get it in that right. Is it July of 19 through June 30th of 20? Is that the block of time we've got?
Yeah, that's for F Y 20, yep.
Yes, so part of it was normal and part of it was not. And you can see from the top portion that we collected 240,700 ish in fines. That is not a normal year for us. Normally it is much, much higher than that. And you can also see, if you look at the very bottom portion, the unpaid fees. Because just because people paid some of those fines doesn't mean that our other ones outstanding. So there were still 200 and oh, good Lord, 226 plus, that's a lot, 800,000?
Yeah.
Somewhere in there.
Yeah.
Robert, do you want to talk about the slide a little bit more about any of the.
Yeah, absolutely. So yeah, this is again, this is just related to fees, related to materials. So wouldn't count other things that come into the library, like printing and copying, everything else. This is just related to fees. And so, you know, for F Y 20, which is like Jessica said, July 1st, 2019 to June 30th, 2020, we had a migration of our I L S. So we changed our major system in November of 2019. And getting ready for that, we did a mass extension of due dates, which kind of gives everybody a longer period of time. And so, you know, no late fees are coming in because they have more time to react. And when we went to our new system, the new system actually had the option of auto renewals, which we had not had previously. And which means that if anything is checked out and is coming up due, as long as there's not somebody actively waiting for that particular item, they will have their item automatically renewed for another three week period. And our renewals are set up to three renewals for each item. So somebody without any kind of proactive effort can see their item just renewed and renewed and renewed. What we find in general is about 75% of our materials are eligible for auto renewal. And as you can imagine, from November 2019 forward, that really had a major impact on late fees because people who were not taking that extra step to renew an item were automatically getting it renewed and they didn't have to worry about it. So we we already started to see a major decline, which we knew we would in our late fee totals. And then in March of 2020, something happened in the world and we went into lockdown and we essentially changed all of our due dates, anything that had been due previously to March 2020. We changed all those due dates. We kind of kept going a month at a time, but ultimately nothing was due until August. So we had, you know, almost a whole half a year after a migration to a new system where we weren't charging any late fees. We didn't have any due dates. So, you know, really, we didn't start to see kind of normal activity pick up again until this fiscal year when we started going back in.
And to give you a little context, this next slide shows you the fine and fee revenue for the last 10 fiscal years. So if you look at fiscal year 2010, we took in $1.6 million, not $240,000. And the fine and fee revenue does not include payment for lost items, right, Robert? Yes, that's separate.
Did you go back to that last chart?
I assume they'll.
The unpaid fees to date, is that accumulative since the beginning of time? Or is that just for 2020 or 2019?
That's a great question. So we actually, we have an agreement with the county audit and finance that we write off all fees that are more than two years old. And we implemented that several years ago, maybe in the 2010 timeframe. So this would constitute anything that basically is fresher than two years.
Yeah, so I did some math and this number down here, the unpaid fees to date as of mid-March is $727,000. So that's how much was still sitting outstanding, not including lost items, just overdue fines and random fees that are on people's accounts. That's that's a big chunk of money, particularly thinking about the fact that we started auto renewal in November of 2019. We didn't assess fines from March through August of 2020. That that's still a lot of dollars that people have hanging out there. And even though we we worked her right off those uncollectible debts, that's what we technically call it. Because if somebody hasn't paid it in two years, it's very unlikely that they're going to. Even though we write those off on a rolling basis, that's still hefty. That is a hefty amount of stuff to be sitting out there on people's accounts, not allowing them to utilize library services.
Well, I have a question. So these are, it says fees collected, but aren't these the overdue fines or is it more than that? It's not lost books.
No, but there's other fees in there. Chris, do you want to give some examples of other fees that might be attached in there?
Um, not lost materials. You can have just late fees for cumulative materials. There's a $10 processing fee that we do from.
Okay.
There's also a $27 non-resident fees that could be included in there.
Okay. Or if somebody damaged something and we had to charge. Yeah, so like if you brought back a book and I don't know, we had to put a new cover on it or something.
Or if it was wet or something like that, something we couldn't recirculate.
Yeah.
Couple more questions. I noticed in some of the material that Jessica sent us that some of the libraries in the country also separate out seniors, 55 or whatever the age group is and over. Do we have anything or is that all lumped into adults? And if we did decide to compartmentalize the fees, are we able to have a category called, you know, seniors or something?
So we we don't have anything at this time. We we could create a new, what we call a patron code that would react to the age and they we would have people set aside a different age. I'd have to check a little bit more into this. I think right now, any of the conversations we've had about different fine structures are based on the materials versus the customer. So I'd have to check with our I L S to make sure that they can actually make the decision based on the customer versus the materials. So that would be a conversation. But but as of yet, yeah, anybody basically who's 18 plus is an adult. And that's the only patron code we have, other than people who might live in different jurisdictions and things like that.
So I had a question about that, about different jurisdictions. Do you collect from which branch, what branches? I assume you have information by what branches are, you know, have what fines, what overdue fines or what late fines?
I think we can, we can dig in and find out.
It's not something that you 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 don't sort out by branch.
Not generally, we just, you know, it's just Fairfax County Public Library as a whole. But I mean theoretically, we could each each pastor, each patron has a assigned branch, which generally is where they'll check out items, not always. But so there's, there's, you know, a fine assigned to an item which could belong to Reston and a customer who could belong to Sherwood. So it gets a little bit.
It's a little messy.
Yeah.
I'm just curious about, you know, in general, I know we can check out from any library in our local libraries, obviously. But, you know, yeah, that, I mean, it might yield information I don't know about.
I think we could look, I mean, we could definitely, I think, just just among the customers, look geographically at what home branch they are and kind of see where the fine hotspots are, if you will.
Be interested in overlay of fine hotspots in the deserts.
With the food insecurity chart.
Food insecurity charts, all of those things to just to see if there's any correlation. Because, you know, you what what one might assume is not what 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 always is, right? And it's very often that it's not at all who you think is not paying their fines that are getting all hot and bothered about not paying their fines, right? So I have found that to be the case, standing in line at the library in Great Falls. So I'm just saying, is that always what you think? I was just curious.
One of the last data cuts that we did on this type of information was around zip codes. So we looked at the zip code where a patron was registered and then we correlated it with if their card was blocked. And we were able to, and so at that point, we were looking specifically at youth cards. So anyone under the age of 18 and where we had an increased preponderance of blocked accounts for youth. And it was not hugely significant, but it was enough of a jump. So a couple more slides and we talk about, the last time we pulled this data was 2018. And at that point, overall, for our 425,000 cardholders, which is not accurate at this point, because I think we've got more because of the pandemic, of the 425,000 cardholders, 18% of them had blocked cards. That means they're fine, what's our fine threshold for blocking? Is it?
We are at 15 and above, yes.
$15, so 18% of those 425,000 people had blocked cards, $15 more than five. But for youth, it was 23%. And for specific zip codes, it got as high as 30%. So that's, you know, there are a lot of ways that we can take what you're asking for and overlay it in different ways. It could be where they checked it out. It could be where they live or where they're registered because they could.
And and you know, we can't even make assumptions about reasons for for that, right? So we really just get, I have had my card blocked many times because I took out a whole bunch of audiobooks for my kids when they were small and just kept forgetting to, I had to pay $60 in fines. I was horrified, I was so embarrassed. And I mean, so that I could use my card, which of course I did, but not everybody does. Not everybody feels the same degree of shame, so.
Yes, well, and one of the interesting things about fines is many people think that they're they are meant to be, they're meant to be punitive. It's meant to be something that's a reminder for you to bring the stuff back so that other people can use it. But if you can afford to pay the fines, then that doesn't really matter as much. Like, I really want to keep this book because I'm not done with it yet. I'm fine with paying whatever 15, 25 cents a day. I'm going to keep it until I'm done with it. That's a different reason for accruing fines than I'm working two jobs and I couldn't get there. Or I lost it, now I'm ashamed and won't come back or or any variety of reasons.
We really just can't make any assumptions about any of it. Like, you know, and you know that I am always standing on the side of equity, everything. But I'm just saying, be me, myself, having had my card blocked, having had the money, it wasn't that. It was just, you know, you get a lot of stuff, you forget. And then so like it is an absolute walk of shame to walk in and have to stand in the front of that line and pay your $60, which I gladly pay. But I mean, I shouldn't say gladly, nobody wants to pay that fine. But you cannot make any assumptions about what the rationale is behind somebody doing it, you know?
I think to speak to your point about how fast it can add up, you know, I I I don't know if we have it in the in the slides. But, you know, at a certain point in in the 2010 range, when we were having such a bad downturn, we did, you know, increase all of our late fees on children's materials from 10 cents to 30 cents a day. And we saw a massive rise in our revenue collection. But I think we also started to see a decline in circulation because for those, you know, those customers who check out 50 juvenile readers or juvenile picture books, one day overdue, when you checked out the maximum amount, suddenly went from, you know, you were paying three times the amount. So I mean, it really is, it does, it does strike everybody.
Yeah, looks like Liz has a question.
Yes, I do. I think it's for Chris, perhaps, or maybe Jessica. But Chris, did you say that we actually turn over accounts to collection agencies?
We we do not, we do not credit report. We use an agency to contact our customers and the title and the name collections is in their like their title. But we do not credit report. We do not actually send them to collections. We are sep, we use a separate agency from what Fairfax County uses as a whole. And they have a legit credit reporting, no playing credit agency that we do not use.
Well, what does that mean? On the bottom of this chart, it says collection agency referral fees. What is, I'm afraid.
That is for our unique, unique, it's called Unique Management Collections, I believe. And that is the agency we use to help us get material and fees back, hopefully. But but again, collection is in the title alone, it does not credit report.
So we we've been using them for a while. And so what they do is we we pay them ahead of time. We pay them 10, basically, they charge us $10 for every customer that we refer to them. And they they work exclusively with libraries across the country. They do what they call a gentle nudge service. They don't credit report, they don't send them to an actual collection agency. But they contact them nicely on the phone multiple times, they send them letters. But it's a way for us to try and see return. And then they, as one of the services they provide, again, with the charge that they pass on to us, that we then pass on to the customer, is they give us a return on, you know, customers who have paid fees after being contacted by them and stuff like that.
So what was, what is the, what is the rate that we give them?
We charge the customers $10 for each referral and I believe we are charged maybe 750 or something by the company.
And yet, do I understand correctly that after two years, if it's not paid, it all gets wiped out? So we make all this effort and we pay a fee and in the end, we wipe it out anyway?
If it's not, yeah, any any fees unpaid for more than two years from their creation date absolutely will be wiped out regardless of what the fee is.
Thank you.
Erin?
I think it's important to note that I think the most common question I get through social media, people think they're being sent to collections. So however, it's been, Chris knows because most Mondays he gets an email from me with some upset patron's name. Um, but people definitely have the perception that they're being sent to collections. So regardless of what's actually happening on the backend, they think they're going to have all of those ramifications that, you know, if you weren't paying your car payment or something, so.
Right, yeah, I was going to say is all my conversations with customers concerned over this generally starts out with, please let me let you know that you are not being credit reported. We use this agency to help facilitate this conversation that we are having right now. We wanted you to reach out so we can fix whatever's going on on your account, you know, but.
Do you, do you, Chris, have the authority or does somebody have the authority based on a conversation with a client, a customer to negate the fee right then and there?
Absolutely.
So depending, so there might be rationale why somebody might be with their story might get a pass where somebody else might not.
Yeah, and we we give autonomy to all of our staff to work with individual patrons, both at the branch and over the phone around their fines and fees, because we want people to use the library again. The the fines are secondary, really. We just want the stuff back. So any staff member from, any staff member can waive fines. Chris just happens to get most of the extra fun ones.
Once I say, once they hear collections, again, you are correct by that. Like, it's not a good word, you know, if there was a nice way to say it.
I know it would cause me heart failure if I got it, I've got something like that because.
Especially from one from the library, yes, ma'am.
Well, yeah, and you know, the implication immediately is that something's going to happen to my credit rating. I have a good standing, blah, blah, blah. Even so, even without any issues on finances, just the the alarm that would come through my body, the anxiety.
Absolutely, yeah. Talk a lot of people down.
Yeah. And maybe that's something else that this group would like to discuss as an auxiliary item. We do have to have some way to continue to contact people to get materials back. And our choices are either the county's collection service, which is much, much vigorous than the unique service we use. But we can't always work on the language for things. If if our continuation of verbiage around collection agency is problematic, that's something we can talk about too.
I might have a question about, or like maybe just a thought about that, that I just want to like state out there. Because we like, I think that once, if we do another level of analysis regarding where we're seeing this and if I don't even know how to do the who we're seeing this from, I don't know, I know we don't collect. We we obviously can't collect the kind of demographic data that would really help us discriminate between a person like me who just lost her head and has plenty of money to pay this fine and somebody who truly cannot pay this fine. Because they are very different populations. And you definitely want to not have a person living up here in Great Falls not paying her fines, you know? That's not okay, right? That's just simply not okay. And even though, because because I mean, I only say that, I think, I just only say that because. because, because I, I mean, I only say that, I think, I just only say that because there's a reason for it. And I'm, I mean, I don't want to sound like, I know Phil says this sometimes in meetings, like, like, you know, and I, I just want to make sure that we're very that we're aware of that because, um, you know, it's important to know who, what, why we're actually not assume that we know the narrative, because we may not know the narrative. And once you dive in, the narrative may be very different. You know, and it just may be very different. I don't want us to, I mean, I know nobody here is forgetting that, but.
If I could, if I could chime in really quickly, uh, we definitely take it as everyone's got a different story. Like, you can't say, oh, you, you know, everyone's story isn't their dog eat their homework, you know, everyone's got a different reason. And again, the fees as far as staff are kind of negotiable, provided the item has been returned. Lost items, you gotta pay for that, but.
Right, right.
Come back. And the other thing that's very unique are the different types of people from different demographic, like who's going to argue the fee? And who's not?
Word, exactly that.
Very surprised who's arguing and who's not.
That's what I'm saying, my friend. That's what I'm saying, because there are people who are too afraid to argue that point. And will never come to the library again because they are too afraid to come pay their bill. They're too afraid. And if they're getting that, like Liz said, if they're getting that, um, uh, collections thing, I mean, complete terror, not understanding, maybe having a language issue with understanding what the, what the implications of that are for, you know, on a million different levels, like really afraid. And then just, or a lot of people just don't use our services because of that possibility. You know that that could happen and bring the scrutiny on their lives, even though we're not doing that. That's not the scrutiny that is being brought to their lives, right? So, I mean, there are a lot of levels.
One of the things, one of the things in the reading, again, dangerous for me to read, but, um, there's all different kinds of fees and fines. And, you know, it's like, what are we focusing on here? I mean, I read things like if you damage a book, you're going to pay for it, you know, on the different thing, different. So I think we need to be clear that, you know, this, this chart right now says on the left, fine, fines trends, and then up at the top it says fees. I'm personally don't have that kind of understanding of what gets fined and what is a fee. And are, are we talking, I think we are talking fines, uh, in terms of our charter. I'd have to go back to the beginning, I guess, but, um.
Yes, you, you are correct. This group is focusing on fines, and that is an excellent point, and I will make sure that we're being more clear about it. Fines are what is charged when you return an item late. Fees are other charges assessed by the library for if you damage a book or if you, um, are sent to the unique management service, or if you are an out of, out of area resident and you have an out of area resident fee. Fines are really what we're looking at here, because that's the universal piece. That's the thing that if you're late, everybody's getting charged, whatever the amount is. It's, how, how much is it? Fifteen?
Thirty cents a day.
Thirty cents a day.
We went up to thirty cents.
For adults and children materials?
Yep. Across the board. Yep.
Okay. Thirty cents a day across the board.
Yeah.
I think people are also shocked how quickly that adds up, like if you have fifty items out.
And, and if I may, um, so I'll clarify just because, because I think some of the older data, data that I gave you before our migration does include, um, the lost items. So I think that is factored in there. So we can clarify that, try to make it more. I don't know how much I'm going to be able to clarify the older data, but we can definitely, um, get that cleared up. And I would just throw in the, the main, you know, we, we, uh, county finance definitely does want us to try and get, um, to, you know, money before it's written off, but the main thing the library is always focused on, which I think Chris kind of alluded to is we really focus on the materials recovery part of this service. The most important thing that staff at all levels down to the library aides who work the front desk, we want the customer to bring back any materials. We're, we're happy to work with any of the other fees on the record. If we can get those materials back, and you know, what we try to emphasize to them is we just want other customers to be able to use those materials. And as soon as you get them back to us, we can work with anything else. And, um, you know, I think to, to further the point that we're talking about, a lot of customers we know don't even have any concept of what a public library is. They may come from someplace that doesn't have anything like this. And they're very hesitant about what hidden fees or what's the catch and everything. And their children come in who sometimes, um, are, you know, better able to speak English and able to sign up for a library card. And all of a sudden, they get a late fee of all these books that their kids checked out and they're surprised and they don't ever want to come back because that happened. And so I think that's something that every staff member deals with and, and is definitely cognizant of. And I think we've really worked hard over the years, back when I was in Chris's position and before that, to make every staff member feel really comfortable about being able to negotiate with each customer based on their, um, stories and circumstances about how the fees are impacting them.
Do we have a fine or a fee that, let's say I borrowed a book and it's six months later. And do we at some point say there's, this is no longer a late thing, the book is lost and you're being charged for the book or something like that?
Absolutely. It's a, it's an automated process. Um, I believe at this point, because of the auto renewals, we moved it up a little bit. But I believe at this point, it's thirty days after the last due date. So if it's been more than thirty days since the last due date, they will get an automatic, uh, lost bill charged for it. And, um, it'll be whatever the cost of the item is in the system.
That is a fee now. That's not a fine.
That's, that is a fee, yes.
So I'm gonna, it looks like we've got a couple hands up, one for Suzanne and one for Jane. I think they've been up for a little while. So Suzanne, what was your question? So, oh, you're muted, Suzanne.
Okay, unmuted, SuJah, SuJah, sorry. In looking at these figures on the chart, have you figured in what the new initiative with the schools, how that's going to affect these dollar numbers?
That is a great opportunity. Um, and we'll talk about the LEAP cards in a little bit as well, the library equity access pass, because that will change things as well. But I want to make sure that Jane's question gets in. And then we'll, we'll go back through the PowerPoint some more, because I think some of the questions that folks have may be answered as we get a little further.
Okay, sorry.
No, you're fine. You're fine.
Well, and that was my, my question is a selfish one, because I have to go to work in, in a little bit, so I'm going to leave early. But I was wondering if we could, um, could Jessica, could you guys just go through this presentation and give us the overview? And then could we continue with questions? Because I'm, this is so fascinating. And I'm getting super distracted in my own mind with little rabbit holes. So is there a way just to do the presentation and then?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, uh, we'll go through the presentation and then for folks that have more specific questions, we can always go back to slides. So we'll, we'll pop back around for them.
I would love it if everybody just noted, like, I'm writing down my questions as they, because I've got a lot coming, they rabbit holes. I'm just not writing them down so that we can make sure. They're so interesting. Every rabbit hole is interesting. Thank you, Jane.
So this slide, um, I showed briefly earlier, and this gives you, you can see the downward trajectory of the intake of fine and fee revenue over the years. Like Chris mentioned, or Robert mentioned earlier, um, some of these earlier figures may include lost item revenue as well. So we're going to need to see if we can pull that data out. But because we've changed service providers, it may be difficult for us to do that. So I'm not going to promise, but we will certainly give it a try. But even if you take that out, you can see the numbers going down. Again, twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one did not drop that much just because of the change in, in usage patterns. That's pandemic related. But, you know, it's halved over time from one point six million to eight hundred thousand. And fiscal year twenty and twenty-one are also the point in time where we instituted auto renewals and the LEAP cards were expanded across all FCPS students. It's an opt-out process. So every student is provided with a library equity access pass, which lets them check out up to three physical items at a time with no fines ever associated with them. And we've had really solid usage, uh, in a couple of specific school areas since those have gone more widespread. So we would anticipate it's going to certainly bounce back from two hundred and forty thousand dollars, but it's not going to climb over the million dollar mark again. It's, it's going to stay lower. One of the other pieces that is really fascinating is the pandemic has pushed more people into using digital resources. So using our ebooks and downloadable audiobooks, and those never accrue fines, and they never have. So the more we see the split between physical checkouts and digital checkouts shift, the less fines we'll see accrued in general. Um, Chris or Robert, anything else on this slide you want to share?
Uh, Jessica, I'm just going to chime in real quick. I looked at the historic data. And it looks like, um, those are the, those are the totals that include everything. Fines generally are about eighty percent of those totals. So if anybody wants to do the math, eighty percent of those totals that you see on that chart will be fines.
I love it. I'm not going to do the math right now, but thank you for the opportunity to do so.
You're welcome.
Um, when we were first looking at opportunities to reduce or eliminate fines, we as a staff had a discussion about whether or not those fines should be removed from youth or teen cards or youth and teen materials, because adults check out teen and kids materials. Like, if you're a parent, you might use your own card to check out fifty picture books. You might not have a card for your child. So we ultimately ended up recommending removing fines associated on materials, not on cards. And in fiscal year nineteen, just the one that ended June thirtieth of twenty nineteen, we saw that fees paid just for those youth and teen cards was about a hundred and forty thousand dollars. And if you go back up to the trend for twenty nineteen, you can see that total was eight hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. So it is a small percentage of the total amount paid. But it seemed like a good stepping stone at that time. These dollars do not come to the library system. All of the fines and fees that are paid go back to the county general fund. And that's the way it has always functioned. And the county makes an assumption about the amount of dollars that the library will bring in in revenue. And we are not dinged in any way if we don't. If we only bring in six hundred thousand instead of eight hundred thousand, they don't take two hundred thousand away from another area. But they like to have a, a guesstimate as to how much is being, going to be coming into the county general fund. So this hundred and forty seemed like a logical progression point to say, you know, we're not saying county, you're not going to get eight hundred thousand in revenue. We're saying you're not going to get a hundred and forty thousands. And then maybe next year you could come back and kind of open it up. Um, Chris or Robert, anything on, on this slide either? Um, staff put together a one Fairfax task team. This, this is just the library after the one Fairfax policy was approved in twenty eighteen. And we looked at a bunch of different projects, including the library equity access pass, uh, the bus ads in English and Spanish that were on the, the tail bumpers. We looked at increasing our partnership beyond the girls probation house to also reach, or beyond the boys probation house to reaching after the girls probation house. We worked on a museum pass free program, and we also looked at fines. So that was the group that actually originally developed the proposal to eliminate fines on youth and teen materials. And that was where we came up with the figures again in twenty eighteen, that we had about seventeen thousand children in Fairfax County who had library cards they couldn't use because they had more than fifteen dollars in fines on them. Um, that was also one of the starting points for the LEAP program. And was the impetus for recommending during the last budget process, the elimination of those fines, which was lovely and included as part of the original advertised budget and then tossed away when the advertised budget was redone after the pandemic and the closures began. Sad face. Remember Jane, we had the, it's a happy face, it's a sad face. So this was the sad face. Um, because of the pandemic, like, like Robert mentioned earlier, we didn't assess fines from March through August of twenty twenty. But we did begin assessing them again when our libraries were reopened to the public fully. And I thought this would be an interesting opportunity for Chris to share some of the feedback that we've received from the public since the re-institution of fines. I can share my own perspective on that, having gotten many, many, many grumpy emails from the public. But Chris is our kind of point person on that. So do you want to share a little bit about the, the transition back to fines and the impact you've seen?
To be blunt, it has been unpleasant, for lack of a better word. People are very upset with the library because we were instituting fines in a time when people, where money was tight and things like that. Again, it's, uh, kind of opened us up to being very flexible with our fees and again, listening to everybody's individual situation and what was going on. Um, and why you may not have um, been able to pay your fees or paid your fees. Um, again, like, almost like the collection letter, it's another situation where generally the result of that conversation with the customer is positive. But the whole experience leaves a bitter taste in their mouth uh, going forward as far as the library is concerned.
Yes, and this is another moment where I am so grateful that Chris has the patience of a saint, because it's, it is so hard to talk to people about this. We were, when we reinstated fines in August, we did it for a good reason. Because our facilities were reopened, people could reasonably drop their things off at the library without coming into contact with anyone. And there was no, um, uh, there was no driver any longer to continue with the cessation of fines. But it was an abrupt change for the public, even though they were given, I think about three weeks of notice. And, um, the public certainly appreciated that block of time where new, no fines were assessed. So it's, it's something we continue to grapple with as, as folks continue to feel the effects of the pandemic on their personal lives and their workability and their capacity to, or interest, capacity or interest in paying fines. Just a few other things that have impacted fines, like Robert mentioned earlier, in fiscal year ten, all daily overdue fees were changed from, um, their previous amount, ten and twenty-five cents to thirty cents across the board. The migration to the new ILS system allowed us to institute auto renewal. And the re, um, excuse me, the utilization of e-materials is continuing to drop the amount of general fines that are assessed on people's accounts. So just so that everyone's got a little background on that. I also promised that as part of this first meeting, we would share some information about what's happening around us locally. Loudoun and Arlington have been entirely fine-free for at least a year each. Uh, Loudoun was pretty, about a year ago, it was after the start of the pandemic, but not that far in. Arlington's been fine-free for a while. Uh, DC Public has also been fine-free for a while as well. They also allow you to print up to twenty pages a day for free if you come to their branch. They just don't charge for it. It's something to go with. And Prince William announced last week that their board of supervisors approved them going fine-free as of yesterday. Some libraries continue to assess fines. Uh, Falls Church and Alexandria, I believe, continue to assess fines. Central Rappahannock is fine-free. And there's a map on the Urban Library Council site that shows which libraries in our area are fine-free or partially fine-free, which still assess fines. And it also gives a little blurb about why. When they did their public announcements, why they have moved to a fine-free model. And again, to be clear, that does not include lost items. If people lose items, they still have to either pay for it or bring it back. In general, we're seeing a pretty sweeping trend across the nation of entities that are moving to a fine-free model. Boston Public Library went fine-free. Suzanne, I can't remember when you sent that to me, but it was, it was a couple of months ago. San Francisco, Sacramento, LA, New York. If you look at most of the larger systems, they're looking at it mainly through an equity lens. They're trying to ensure that any resident has the opportunity to use library services if they'd like to. Uh, but also, part of it is looking at a cost benefit analysis. So if you look at how much time and energy it takes us to collect fines, it's a lot of time. And we use those kiosks that accept your credit card and cash and change payments. Those take a lot of money to maintain and keep in our facilities as well. So that's another piece that we would be happy to do, um, a little bit more digging on and provide more information if you all are interested in. But I can, I can tell you anecdotally, the amount of energy it takes us as staff to process fines and fees is hefty. So, but that's not a great number. So we'll, we'll, we'll look a little bit more into that.
I would just add that Loudoun actually was fine-free for a long time, then instituted fines to try and get some revenue, and then almost immediately went fine-free again. So because of, because, I mean, I think primarily from what I heard from people there is because of the uh, amount of feedback, negative feedback from the public.
Yeah. And we go up and down about how much we cha- charge, what type of items we charge on, how long it's going to take until you get charged a fine. It's a very kind of roller coaster ride, if you remember the public. Um, I included a link with all the resources that you all, uh, were shared as part of the agenda packet, but I'm not going to go through them all today. And I thought it would be important for this group to, to to look at it from both sides. You know, we as staff may have a, a perception that eliminating fines will only be helpful, that it'll bring more people into the library, that it will reduce the, the work, the transactional work that's required of staff, that it will, um, decrease barriers. But there are certainly another side to the story that fines can be a good impetus to get people to return their stuff and that library materials are collective goods. So it's really, it's an obligation to bring it back so that other people can use the shared resource. And some folks think that fines are a good teaching tool for children, that the, that there is, um, one of the benefits of fines is that children learn that there are repercussions. If you do not bring your things back, you have a fine that's associated with your account after that. So just kind of the two sides of the story to, to think about. So, that's the end of our. So that's the end of our staff presentation. We are happy to answer any questions. And we would love to hear from you all if there are additional areas of research or reference that we can pull together for your next meeting. What I've heard so far is, is there any way to separate out information about fines for seniors? Or if there's any way that we could look at negating fines for seniors? Looking at fine hotspots and seeing how they overlay with zip codes or branch usage? Some information about the verbiage around collection services and if there's alternative options that might be out there that strike a little bit less fear into the hearts of folks. And we're going to take a look and see if there's any way we can separate out the data from older fiscal years around lost materials versus the collection of fines and fees. So.
Jessica, can I, can I just chime in really quickly? Just the, there was a question there, I think that you were going down, that asked about separating fees for seniors.
Yes.
And I just want to let everyone here know, you may already know, but we do not make the birth date mandatory. So separating out accounts by age, I mean, just say that may be an obstacle or just a hurdle if we decided to go that route of separating accounts by age.
So Jotha, this is your committee, so you want to kick off with the questions?
Um, yes, so, um, I hope I didn't, wasn't unmuted when I was yelling at my daughter to go deal with the dogs. Oh my God. I thought I was muted, but anyway. That's really embarrassing. It's just a whole day of embarrassment. Okay, one thing, um, well, I have a couple of questions. Do we have discretion in this area or are there directives from the Board of Supervisors regarding our decision here?
So that is a great question that I don't have an entirely clear answer to. The county, the county is the one with the ultimate authority over whether or not our library budget includes an assumption of fine revenue. But we can always put in that we want to eliminate fines and, or we want to eliminate fines on youth and teen materials, and so our estimate of revenue collection will be decreased. They can always come back and say, no, we anticipate you're going to collect the same amount you collected last year. But if you all are interested in moving forward with some kind of change, I think advocacy is going to be a huge part of this because it's, you know, it's going to have to be.
So another question related to that, have we done a cost, a cost analysis regarding, you said all of those things that are so costly in the, in the taking of fines versus how much we collect?
We have only done that on a very anecdotal basis, so this is a great opportunity.
Something really interesting to know, like how much all of those things cost? Like if you were to overlay what the hotspots are, what the branches are, what the kiosk, the cost of maintaining the kiosk is, these unique, whatever it is called, unique collections, fees, et cetera, everything, all the fees associated with collecting fines versus the outlay of revenue that's in your, in your budget, right? So you take that out of your library budget, so if you were to eliminate that, what would it look like that you would be making the case to the Board of Supervisors, you're actually coming up with an actual?
Agreed. That one might take a little bit more time to start hashing out, but we will, we will start on it.
Information, it's good information because if we can make the case that this doesn't, it doesn't, it just, like the SRO, I'll tell you, like just, you know, for the SRO thing, they cost eight million dollars. What is the return on investment for that eight million dollars to police children in schools, right? So it's like the same kind of question, is this really, is this juice worth the squeeze, you know? And so that was that. And then, how do we tell, how do we articulate to the public that, as, I think, I think that Robert was saying that parents, sometimes they don't know, they're hesitant because they, they collect fees, but then they, I'm sorry, they, they're hesitant to take out materials because they don't really, all of a sudden there's a fee. How do we, I don't remember myself, I'll tell you, I don't remember how it is that I knew what the fee was. Like I know you get this thing that says you, that tells you the date, you know, it's due in twenty-one days. You get the little piece of paper, you know, and then that, like now you get something like that sent to you in your email or whatever, I mean, sorry. I don't even remember how it is to get this thing that's like sent to you. So.
Well, you, you have.
How do we tell people?
It used to be, go ahead.
Oh no, I'm sorry, Chris, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, uh, and this is showing my age, it used to be part of your transaction when you got a new card, there was a whole spiel, you gave them a little pamphlet, send them on their way. As time goes on and every piece of his attention span has gotten shorter, we don't really make that spiel mandatory because they're already walking away before you've told them anything. So you try to give them as much information when they're signing up as possible. But that's usually, hey, you can use your card at any branch, the loan period is three weeks, late fees are thirty cents a day per item. And you back away quietly. So I mean, those are kind of the key points that you are supposed to hit when you're registering someone for an account.
So you don't do it, like the librarian who's checking you or whoever it is that's checking you out doesn't articulate that, or do they? I don't remember.
We're, yeah, I mean, it's very rare, we're, we're actually at about eighty-five to ninety percent self-checkout at most of our branches these days. Probably even more now post-pandemic, so there's no spiel that happens there. And in person, you know, it's, it's generally, I think like Chris said, they would assume that somebody would have gotten that spiel when they first got their card, but people are getting their cards online. So in the email, we have information. As you start to get the overdue emails and it starts to get closer to the due date, you'll have a link to say, hey, avoid late fees by, you know, bringing this item in if it didn't get automatically renewed. But what we also see is now that people are getting used to the auto renewals, they aren't paying as much attention to their notices because they're just like, oh, everything will be renewed, but I don't have to worry about it. So that creates another customer service barrier on the back end in an opposite way, but.
And when did we switch from ten cents to thirty cents?
Uh, again, I think that was about FY ten.
Yeah, twenty, twenty eleven.
It's been quite a long time. Okay, thank you. Yeah, thank you very much.
And Jane, I know you said you had to go to work, so maybe we'll have you go next. Oh, you're muted.
Thanks. Um, my, my takeaway from this presentation and our discussion is that there is no reason for us to have fines. I mean, there has been nothing that even when you showed us the other side, that is not compelling at all about why we would want to send a punitive message, it just doesn't work. I, I totally disagree with that. I think it would be busy work for us to continue with fines, I think it's a waste of resources. And since it's already been, we've got the precedent, they approved that in the before times budget to do away with some fines, right? So the Board of Supervisors already was leaning that way.
The staff, staff were leaning that way.
Okay, the staff was leaning that way, but things were looking good for us with that budget.
Yes.
In general.
Yes.
Um, we know the Board of Supervisors loves the library. And just the recent experience that staff has had with the fines in the pandemic, I just, I think it's a win for, for the supervisors as well, for the whole county, if we just do away with the fines. So I just wanted to say my forceful opinion and also ask, you know, so what does this, what can our committee do about this and what's our timeline? Is this something where if we agree, come to an agreement, do we recommend this for the budget cycle? And is that in September? Like, what would we, what would it look like?
So timeline wise, staff will begin to, excuse me. Got so excited, I started coughing. So staff will start developing the budget in September and then it'll be submitted in October. So you've got a little bit of time to continue to, to research the additional data that staff are going to provide and see if you want to bring this forward. I would strongly recommend that you discuss this as a full board though, because as strongly as you feel, Jane, I think there are some of your colleagues on the board go the other way.
Right.
And then just as strongly, so. Being able to get everybody, if not to consensus, at least understanding why this committee might be recommending things will be important. It's, the next fiscal year is going to be the first one where the county is aligning the budget with their strategic plan. So you'll also have an opportunity to find a point in there that connects over to eliminating fines and having read through it, there are a couple there that could work well for you all on that if you chose to do so. But in general, timeline wise, September is going to be when you want to have to have a final recommendation and a discussion with the full board before budget adoption.
Our board and board retreat is October?
So not confirmed yet. You and Fran had said you were good for September twenty-fifth or October tenth. And staff are looking at space availability, the whole board has not been notified yet about date selection.
Okay, so Sujatha and.
I don't know what you're talking about, because I'm supposed to go to Ireland, so please tell me.
I'm so sorry. So occasionally our board has a joint retreat with the Board of Supervisors.
Oh, that is October eleventh.
October eleventh. Okay, so it could be really cool if our board had consensus on this issue and this was one of the issues discussed with the Board of Supervisors.
Okay, I have October twelfth on my.
Oh, it's the Tuesday, you are correct, it's October twelfth.
That's not, is that what you were talking about, Jane?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I just wasn't keeping track.
And so is, and what's the timeline that we might be able to, I, I love making more work for staff, Jessica, I'm sorry about that, I'm kind, making new work for staff. I think that it could be very, it could be a convincing argument, although I don't know what it would say if we knew what the juice is, if the juice is worth the squeeze, right? So like.
We'll have it by them. I don't think we'll have it, if you meet in three or four weeks, I don't think we'll have all the analysis done by early June, but we'll definitely have it done by then.
Yeah, because it, I mean, if we're finding that it's just simply not worth it, then it's easy to make that argument, especially if our surrounding counties are moving that way and it's sweeping that way. Why should we be regressive, right? That makes us look extra bad, you know?
Agreed. Liz? Oh, you're, you're muted.
Okay, sorry about that. Um, in reference to the, I think it was two hundred and fifty thousand plus dollars for the children on the fees.
Yeah, I've got the slide pulled back up for you.
And we said that was seventeen thousand, approximately seventeen, those are, those are, those are the people that not necessarily are blocked, right? Or are they blocked, the two hundred and fifty thousand fees? The people that represent those, that's the seventeen thousand kids that are blocked?
Oh, I think it's a couple of slides down, Jessica, I think it's the other one that we did in two thousand and eighteen, yeah. Is that the one, I think?
No, these are, these are fines paid.
No, I was talking about the, the, the fees that are still pending or something. Back to that other chart.
Okay. So on this.
Children and teens would be two hundred and eighty thousand. So that me, does that mean that that's equates to the seventeen? I know the two fifty, fifteen dollars would be seventeen thousand kids.
No, they are not directly correlated because we could have, you know, two hundred thousand kids with cards, they each had a dollar in fines on them. So it's not a direct correlation there between cards that are blocked and the amount of fines that are either paid or still outstanding. Okay, yeah.
And we, we can refresh that data that we had from back then just to see what the current, because I mean, a lot of it, again, with no fees, and I will throw in, I don't know if I can throw this in as an employee or not, but I'll throw it in anyway, I guess it'll be preserved, unrecorded. But you know, in, in a lot of ways, this is a great time if we were to make this change because our expected and unpaid fees are at their lowest level ever because of everything that's been going on. So any write-off, if we were to go to a no-fee solution would be small and that might be more receptive from the county.
And my question is for Chris. Chris, how many people are just percentages, just an estimate, guesstimate? Um, of the people that contact you that you write them off?
Uh, let's say more than sixty percent. Like basically, if they get to me, then we're going to have a long conversation and I can find out the whole story and address it as, even if it's a lost item per se, I can say, hey, let me take off your most expensive lost item and let you pay for the, you know, it's, it's always a negotiation. I don't know. I try not to just give everyone blanket. I always tell people at the most, go with half and see how the people react to half. And then if they push further, send them up to me and I'll negotiate and see what we can do. So let's say sixty-five percent, seventy percent.
So if I have the wherewithal to, to pursue it, then I have a better success rate of getting it wiped off versus somebody who's quiet and afraid and.
That's, that's a big thing of it. And then I also, being where I am now, I have the repeat offenders that even without seeing them, I know their name or they know me by my first name. And I'm kind of like, well, I did this for you before, I can't really do it for you again. What can we do? And I say this at the beginning of, at the end of the first transaction, what can we do to make that, this is a win for both of us? How can I help you not have this happen again? Is your email correct? Or is your, are you getting notices like that, you know? I go through all the steps to try to make sure they don't become repeat offenders.
Okay. The other thing is that in my scanning the literature that Jessica sent, there's a lot of libraries that have several years of experience with no fees and the, and the, the end results are, you know, increased circulation or whatever their experience is. I think that some of us are leaning towards, you know, just wiping off the fees completely. I know we still have some data gathering to do, but, um, if we were going to propose something like that, I think it would be helpful to have some other libraries' experiences in terms of, you know, like they're going to be concerned, even our library board will be concerned about, you know, oh my God, these books will never be returned. They're going to be sitting out there, you know, forever and we're going to reduce circulation and et cetera, et cetera. So I think that if we are going to go forward, having some other libraries' experience and what the end results were, like increased circulation, increase this, that, I think that would be helpful in terms of the pro position, if that is in fact what we end up doing.
I love that idea and I've got a number of colleagues in some of these systems that I would be happy to reach out to for systems that have been fine-free for at least a couple of years, just to get their perspective.
Now, I have one more question and then I'll shut up. Why did we raise the fee from ten percent lateness to thirty percent back in two thousand and ten or two thousand and eleven? Why did we do that?
Budget, we were trying to make money.
Yeah, it was, that was the major downturn. So I mean, we were, we were getting hit. That's when we lost a lot of library staff. At one time, we got rid of basically half of our page staff. So we were trying to find everything. Another thing that we did, which was really a bad idea back then, is we charged a patron lookup fee.
Oh, yeah.
A dollar every time somebody didn't have a card and that was hugely horrible, yep.
It was like a year, like maybe a year of that.
It was like two, two and a half years, actually, and we finally, thankfully got rid of it. But it was, it was an extremely useful tool in generating bad will for the library. We probably had more complaints. I was lucky enough to be in Chris's position at that time and we had horrible, horrible complaints about that. And thankfully, we did not institute a dollar charge for items left on the hold shelf. That was thankfully not recommended to go through, but that was another proposal that I'm, it was, the county was trying to do everything they could to find ways to get revenue at that period.
I worked for a different county at that point back in California and during that same time period, we instituted a fifty cent charge for every item that you placed on hold that had to be moved via our in-transit system to help make up the gas costs for moving things between locations. And it's, 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 it's got such a negative impact because you want people to use the materials and those are kind of baked in overhead costs that we know about. But it was such a bad, bad financial time for libraries. In California, they actually zeroed out state funding for libraries. So we get five hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars here in Fairfax County every year from the state library. Imagine if that all just kind of went away, they totally eliminated it.
With the government pandemic funding from last year and going forward, did the library in Fairfax County get money from that pot of money?
We didn't get any direct funds. Most of that went towards the county's pandemic relief effort. So it went to the Health Department and the Office of Emergency Services. It did fund things like the cleaning supplies in our branches, increased janitorial services, all the Plexiglas that went up. So all of the things in the library that were implemented because of the pandemic were funded through that.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah. Fran?
Yeah, um, I wanted to echo Jane's feeling that we, we should try to be ready, I think, for the budget time. But at the same time, and Liz already alluded to this too, I, I want to make sure that we have really good data to back up our position. And a couple of questions that I had. I re, I can remember when people who were. I re, I can remember when um, people who were against Halloween books would check them out and never return them. And um, I don't, so the, the thing of lost books, um, you know, can it, can encompass more than just benign losing a book. I, I doubt that there's a way to track that or get a sense of that uh, at all. But I, I just wanted to bring that up and um, and, and an anecdotal level, level many, many years ago. I remember being at someone's house in DC at a party and we were all sitting on the floor and I was looking at the bookcase and I noticed all these books with library uh, labeling on them. And I said, oh, but you got there and she had just built her library. She just took them and kept them. Um, so there and I just think that we wanna be ready for that issue that could come up. The other question that I had um, is about um, tracking fines by branch and location and um, identifying home branches. And I wonder the impact of floating on that, if that kind of information is gonna be um, and you may have more experience by now because floating's been around for a while, that actually people do have still have the home branch and we still see that. Um, so I don't know if it would be worthwhile to compare or if it's even possible to compare home branch now with home branch before floating and that might not be possible at all. And, and I, I rely on your experience with um, you know, how long floating has been in effect, that it doesn't, that it, it doesn't really make that much difference. Um, and I, I know, I know that on the holds thing with people, I know there are people, I remember because I did, I pulled holds when I was a volunteer at TJ and I know there are people, and you do too, who do their browsing uh, in the hold system. And if only we could capture that as a circulation figure. That would be great. Like how many books are placed on holds? Because a lot of people place a million books on holds and then they don't check them all out because they just wanna look at them and see if they wanna keep them. So that's just a a funny comment. Um, I think those are the main things, but I think, I think that a great start today um, with the background that we're getting and then the, the sort of diving in and getting more information too. Uh, I think, I definitely think we can be ready. Um, with what we're, with where we're going. So, good job.
Suzanne, did you still have a question? Oh, you are muted.
Okay, yes, I did. Um, are we still circulating two week books, the new, new books?
Yeah, I have one out right now. I have one out right now.
Because I wonder what, having no fines, what impact? Would we still wanna keep having two week books at that?
Hot picks, yeah.
We would have to talk with collection services folks because the, the hot picks, the two weeks ones, they're meant to, well, they're, they're meant to both decrease the hold line because you might find it and then take it out and to give that kind of browsability for things that have a million holds on them.
Right.
Um, I don't know if we get tons of fines on those proportional to what we get on other things.
Look, I'm not sure how, we, we can see if we can pull that out just for hot picks materials and what the fine rate looks like. Um, it seems like for the most part, we're pretty good on hot picks. I mean, I'm just anecdotally speaking, we're, we don't have a lot of complaints about those ones um, being held out a long time. And uh, you know, I think in all these conversations, we're still talking about, like the other systems have done, you're still gonna be responsible for the lost charge. So I do seem to speak to what, you know, Fran was talking about earlier with people making their own libraries. At a certain point, you will be accountable to somebody for the cost of the material. Um, but yeah, you know, I, I mean, I guess if we didn't have fines and you had a hot pick, it could easily become a regular pick. In two weeks, but I, I don't know how much, I mean, our customers, no matter what else, I think the vast majority of our customers that we all find are just conscientious to a fault and all they wanna do is check the materials out, use them appropriately and get them back as soon as they can.
Without fail. There is no consequence, right? To be clear, the actuality is that you may just waive that, but, but I'm sorry, if, for example, like Fran's friend who has a library full of library books, right? Forever. And then you, there's supposed to be some consequence for that, you know, because you never returned the book, right? So, but the, most it goes to is to unique collections or whatever that doesn't necessarily, there is no actual consequence.
Until then, so you'd be blocked. You'd have a, you know, you, you wouldn't be able to, at a certain point, you'd be blocked. Yeah, so, so no further use, but we have people and we know it that, you know, once we instituted the, the audits finding that we should um, get rid of any fines over two years, we know that we had people who came back. So in, in a way, it's great that they came back. But they also in some way figured out that if they could hold out for two years about using the library, they would be able to come back. So.
Build up my fees for two years.
I don't think people go out of their way to do that. I think they just found out that that happened, but that would be a lot, I think, for somebody to, to have to hold off for that long.
There are certain people who game the system like there are anywhere else, but they are very small proportion. Suzanne, I'm so sorry. It'll take you.
No, I was, it, it just occurs to me that when you send out the renewal, non-renewal notices, I sometimes find them a little confusing. And if we switch to no fines, I think we need to have some kind of message going to the holders of the hot pick books and books that have heavy hold lines on them. Just a nicer reminder saying that there are three hundred and forty people waiting this, for this book. So could you speed it up and so that they'll get their turn to some, you know, something along those lines rather than having it all squeezed into your whole list of books you have.
Say, you're assuming that people are actually opening those emails.
Well, I do. You know, I read books according to how many holds there are on the book.
You're the only person who does.
I'm sure.
You're so good.
You're likely in the minority. I'm sorry to say. If you don't care, if we don't get them in the email subject, I think I lose a lot.
It's a former librarian. You are, you're, you've got that.
It's guilt. It's guilt.
Um, Erin, did you have another question? No, your hand is sore, so I might have been just a leftover.
Sorry, before we go, in the chat, uh, I think it was Sujatha asked if we were keeping track of complaints and where they were coming from and which branch? No, I get rid of those nasty emails. I think it would only be, I got to have to kinda go into the account and look at it and I'm not tracking people like that. Like really, it's like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then Liz, was your hand up again?
I was just thinking that I don't know what the timeline is to talk to the library board about this, but uh, one of the ways that I would approach it would be the trend is, you know, I would, I would say, you know, that twenty ten, we did the thirty percent, this is me talking, thirty percent increase um, because of the budget, blah, 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 and that perhaps that was a mistake or whatever, not, we're not even saying that. But there is a trend I'm hearing throughout this conversation about leap and, you know, two year, two years, you reduce sixty five percent or people result. The thing is, is that we're working hard at not finding people. And the trend is we're going away from fines and our surrounding communities have gone away from fines. And so larger perspective is the country as well perhaps. But um, I would put the supporting, the trend um, picture in that this is just another evolution of things that have already been taking place for a while. And um, then I think with uh, what Sue Jortha has said about, you know, like figuring out the cost of doing this kind of business versus the, you know, the, the uh, the cost of, of uh, the negative costs of doing it from a, a customer relationship standpoint as well as from a staff standpoint and um, in terms of, that's the kind of picture I would be creating that the, it's almost like a foregone conclusion. Well, this is the evolutionary next step in that process, whether we do it across the board. Um, or we decide that we're just going to do it with uh, children and uh, young, you know, youth um, people, but um, uh, I, again, I support what Fran, uh, uh, not Fran, uh, Jane said about everything I've been reading of the material that was given to me um, by Jessica sells me this is just the right thing to do and there's a lot of effort at trying to maintain this and there's ways that we can communicate with the public. Since ninety six percent of our people have emails, that we could have positive, more positive messaging of reminders that, and maybe we can make it even like flag in different red colors or blue or whatever, green, yellow, whatever. So that they see that, you know, they kept this book a long time or whatever it is, remind them, maybe it's time to bring it in. I think we could do that a lot more effectively in a nicer way than going after these fifteen dollar when I hear about, you know, thirty cents a day is fifty days at for fifteen dollars. And you know, that seems like little money, but that is such a barrier mentally for people, for all of this stuff that we're talking about. So, peace.
Peace out. I think that what Fran said in the chat is like, really, i- i- I think that carries a lot of weight with people who might be hesitant to think we're not, we are still going to be, you know, treating the lost books, the damaged books, the same. Um, that that would go a long way. I am really kinda curious, like what Fran was saying about the Halloween books has my brain, like every time you guys tell me anything, my brain is just like, oh my God. And I'm just wondering, like, what are the hot button issues, right? So like, I was thinking there could be issues regarding trans youth, so LGBTQ things, but like, like I. Yeah, also CRT, like, okay, so critical race theory is like, really like making people freaking out. Lots of race things make people completely freak out. So there could be some interesting issues that people, you know. I mean, who knows whether that's actually still happening. What you said though, I'm thinking, I would never, like when you are not a diabolical mind, it doesn't occur to you. I can't even believe anybody did that, but isn't it genius? It's evil genius to take out all the Halloween books and just keep them.
Cause I have, Chris, if you remember, that happened at Chantilly.
Chantilly, yeah.
When we were at Chantilly, I remember that. I was just furious.
Yeah, and it, it covers a whole bunch of topics too. It just depends on what, there was a story years ago about um, library staff that were unhappy, not in any of our systems, library staff that were unhappy about uh, the development of a specific graphic novel collection. And so they would just check out the items and between themselves, pass it back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. So it's, it's not just our patrons. Sometimes staff can be a little compulsive about things too.
Can we be, I mean, there's always that uh, negative creativity that people come up with workarounds all the time on anything. But is there some things that we can create that would block that kind of activity that um, uh, or prevent it? Uh, or or respond to it, be able to respond to it uh, effectively to get those books back. You know, maybe we can come up with something, but um, but yeah, uh, it's amazing what people will do when they are, they're not happy with something.
Oh, yeah. I think you all know that my position prior here was in California and in California, um, cultivation of marijuana for personal use was not illegal. And so the library collected materials on um, the growth and processing of uh, different types of plants that would support that. And that was one of the most frequently um, not returned collections that we've had. Um, and you know, because we're not making up our own narrative for it, I don't know if it's because they just really liked the books or because they didn't want it circulating for other folks, but there's always like. There, there are always different topics that folks are gonna get excited about, so.
Let me ask you a question here, uh, guys. So um, it's almost eleven thirty. And so what, what is the frequency with which we, this, this committee should meet and what should be that, like, I would think for, for next, I would love to see some sort of like, at least some progress regarding that return on investment argument, which I think would be like very persuasive for people who are not sure whether this is an idea. That's a really important bit of, of information. Liz said something now, it's like, I wrote it down here somewhere. I don't even know about.
Trendy.
What'd you say?
The, the trend that we're going.
The trend that we're going and that like, yeah, I mean, you, again, you shared all of that stuff and then I lost my internet and then I changed my, and now I can't access my email, so I, I never got a chance to read it. Five days no internet, guys. I should have come to the library and I didn't. Um, uh, so like, that, that's something like, you know, I think would be really helpful. And then just like, you know, I would like to hear just if there's even anything more regarding our discretion, you say the B, the Board of Supervisors and the discretion, how, what the what, I like to prepare for blowback, right? So like, you know, I like to be prepared for all of the counter arguments that that, and I'm not saying like one way or another, right? I don't know, we haven't looked at it yet, whether this removal of fines is the right thing to do. However, when you see that all of your surrounding counties are moving in that direction, you look like, I mean, excuse my pardon, my friend, you look like the asshole. That's like, I'm like, if you're not doing what everybody else is doing, you end up looking like the asshole. You really do. And that's like, as communities do different things that are more progressive and you're not doing that, that doesn't look good for, for, that's just not a good look, right? So if we're not gonna do it, we have to have a iron, an ironclad narrative for why we're not doing it and how we are different from Arlington, uh, Loud and PWC. You know, we would have to have an ironclad argument to make to the public of why we are just so special, right? So.
And I, I would add, we are, I mean, you know, I think everybody knows, we are, we have a wonderful amount of libraries that have reciprocal arrangements. So, I mean, we could actually be driving our customers to other library systems.
Whatever, exactly. Absolutely. That too, that, that, that feeds into the narrative. That feeds into one, to one side of the narrative, right? So we really do have to have like a, like a, like a robust argument either way. But if, you know, I'm really always very moved, but when we, when progressive things are happening in surrounding areas and across the nation, then there's a reason for that. And you don't wanna end up looking like a person who's just a progressive thing. You know, that's just not a good look for anybody. So anyway, so when, how frequently should we meet? And um,
So the, the frequency is up to you all. I would say that with the type of information that staff need to pull together three, three or four weeks would be helpful to, to block off before then.
Why don't we say four weeks?
Okay, so if you'd like, because Jane um, had to step out early, I can send around some dates and times and see what works for everyone for the week of June seventh.
So helpful.
Okay, we'll do that.
Thank you very, very much, Jessica, as always for everything. And thank you all for all of the, partly helpful information. Erin, Robert, uh, Chris, I really appreciate that. And for all the rest of you, even coming on to, to do this with me, who does not know how to do this. So I really, really do appreciate very much any and all guidance and all help and every good comment. Thank you so much for being so uh, deep in the weeds. And I will call Margaret, get my phone hooked up, get my authentication on my new phone so I can access everything that you did send so that I would be better prepared. It's just horrible. What an ordeal. Oh.
It's life. Life happens.
Uh, Jessica and Bobby, I, if you could send me the PowerPoint, because you sent it to the committee and we, and I'd like to have a.
No, we have not sent it to the committee. I finished it about twenty minutes before the meeting, so we will send it around.
What should be discussed at the next library board meeting, anything?
So typically the committee chair will give a report during the, the chair or during the committee sessions. Um, so Jaffa, it's, it's up to you, what you would like.
If you could just send me that PowerPoint, that would be helpful. And I will uh, collate the questions that I remember. I will send everything to the uh, to the committee so that um, if you, if I missed questions, I'm sure I did, I'm sure I did miss questions that uh, you could add them in there so that I can articulate them to, to the group, the things that we're uh, pondering over and the questions we've asked. What we have asked staff to do for us to, to come up with us, to come up.
Yeah, yeah, summary, a summary for the board.
I'll do that.
And what date are we looking at perhaps to read again?
Sometime in the week of June seventh.
Just remember, June the eighth is the Democratic primary day.
Okay, not June eighth. Um, Sujatha, would you like to call your meeting to close?
Um, uh, what do I do to do that? Is there a thing?
You can say, we're done.
Okay, we're done.
Hand it comments and information. It's do, very much appreciated.
Yeah. Um, Robert, can I, can we chat for a minute once this is over and the recording stops?
Bye, everyone.
Bye. Bye bye.